This is our September the 5th, 2024. Matthew, if you recall the roll. It's hard to believe the year's two-thirds over.
Commissioner Drain? Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham? Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Commissioners in your packets were our minutes of our August the 15th meeting. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please.
Does the motion may be approved?
Second.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, thank you, Matthew. Commissioners in your packets, you have the subdivision site development plans. Are there any questions? And they will be approved. No new business, Rachel?
No new business.
No old business?
No old business.
Okay. We enter into our public hearing tonight. The first item is 2024-08-DP. Custom Build Design LLC, care of Darryl Oliver, has filed an application to amend the general development plan, uh, the general development plan commissions on 15.79 acres, located on the north side of Old Mount Pleasant School Road, fronting Collingwood Court. The area subject, the area subject to this application is currently zoned RE residential.
Chair Warren, I request that you order that the record include all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications of those staff witnesses. Finally, I request that you administer the oath to the, to those witnesses.
Thank you. I was supposed to call on him. All right, thank you. Go ahead. Oh, y'all swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, we got to talk about the future meetings. We got to take care of tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on July 31st for the property that you outlined, or properties that you outlined. The current zoning is RE. Current land use is single-family residential and vacant, and the future land use is low-density residential. And again, the applicant is proposing to amend the development plan on a property located in Pleasant Grove subdivision, uh, to increase the permitted number of lots from 13 to 14. The applicant is also, also proposing to eliminate the substrate requirement. And the exhibit can be found on page six for your reference. Looking down to the development history, uh, the properties were rezoned to RE in 2020, uh, 2022, if this looks, um, familiar to you. Uh, so the proposed changes, uh, can be found on page two. So if we look over at the bottom of page two, there, the revisions are shown in bold. In, uh, DPC number one, the property will be developed with a maximum of, um, 14 residential building lots. If we look over to page three, uh, to number eight, all lots shall be served via internal streets, and they're proposing to strike, uh, the development shall include sub streets to the properties to the north and east. The developer shall widen Old Mount Pleasant School Road to 18 feet from the development's entrance to AT Johnson Road. So they're proposing to strike, um, the last part of that language there. Looking back to page one, uh, the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process, remains consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, the staff recommendation is approval pending public hearing, testimony, and any discussion. That's all we have for staff report. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. Amen. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? All right. Is the applicant here or the representative anything that you all would like to add? All right, thank you. Is there any opposition to this request tonight? Okay. Hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, docket number 24, 2024-08-DP. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted focused 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Further, I also found that there, there have been major changes, major changes of economic, physical, and na- social nature within the area of the property in question. I request that the findings, the fact, and recommendations include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved. It's a planning commission final action. Our next item tonight is 2024-34-Z County. Warren County Board of Education has filed an application to rezone 20-plus acres, located on Dillard Road, on the northeast side of the intersection of Dillard Road, Dillard Road and Bettersworth Road, from Ag to PE Public with the general development plan. Sir?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in May for the property you just referenced on Dillard Road, and the applicants have applied to rezone the property in order to construct a new elementary school and associated facilities on the property. This is the current aerial view, along with the current zoning, which is agriculture, also a current use of agriculture, and the future land use is low-density residential. And just to note that although the proposed public district is not listed as a potentially, potentially compatible zone in this fut- future land use designation, schools are allowed in all residential zones identified as potentially compatible in this category with a conditional use permit, and so therefore a future land use map amendment is not required. Also worth noting, if we need to view any of the property photos, we do have those for your reference. This is the view looking toward Bettersworth Road, and then kind of going counterclockwise, uh, back around, looking down Dillard Road to the east. And then, uh, view just straight into the property, and then back looking, uh, the other direction of Dillard Road as well. I'll go back to the site plan and, uh, look at our points to consider. Uh, on page one, we have noted, uh, consideration relating to, uh, loss of prime farmland. Uh, you'll see on page two that roughly half of the property is classified as prime farmland. We also have a note on page two under surrounding architectural features regarding the bulk and scale of the proposed building, uh, noting that most buildings, uh, range from height in, uh, from building height from one to two stories, and that lot sizes range from 1,270 square feet to 6,572 square feet. And the applicants are proposing a building footprint of 125,000 square feet with a maximum height of 45 feet. And so we've just noted that this is greater in bulk and scale than the existing structures in, on Dillard Road and in the vicinity. And then one final point for your consideration on page three, looking at signage. There are not any freestanding signs along this section of Dillard Road, and there are limited subdivision entrance signs, uh, for some of the nearby residential developments. And in the case of this signage, it has to be monument style, um, along with a maximum height of seven feet and a sign face area of 32 square feet. Uh, lighting for subdivision signs is limited to external illumination only. The applicants are proposing a monument-style sign, no larger than 10 feet in height, with no more than 100 square feet of sign face area. And we've just noted that this is taller and larger in square footage than what is currently existing for, uh, residential developments in the area. And the applicants did not address illumination for the proposed freestanding sign. Um, but I will jump back to page one and look at the first point to consider, uh, at the bottom, which states that the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process. And we did find the application to be generally compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, our staff recommendation is for approval pending public hearing, testimony, and discussion. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Uh, commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurd?
It's fair to say this is really just a formality when we do schools, correct?
Well, you can still consider your usual compatibility items.
Okay.
But you have approved other schools in, in similar settings, if that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volker. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here anything y'all would like to add? Mr. Bridgman?
Tim Bridgman, 1010 College Street. Sorry to tell the truth.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add is this plan is very similar to the one you all approved back in May for the new North Warren Elementary. If you have any questions on this specific school, we're happy to answer them. Chris McIntyre is here as well.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Bridgman?
Is this, uh, school similar in design as some of the others in the area of the county, or is it, is it anything unique about the structure that we need to know?
Chris is probably going to be better.
Mr. McIntyre, if you, if you would state your name and your address, please, sir.
Chris McIntyre, 303 Lovers Lane.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So the same building footprint as Warren Elementary and Rich Pond, which is similar to Jennings Creek and Cumberland Trace, just the facade will be different. We're going with more of a lodge theme as the style of the facade of this building.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a, uh, opposition or question regarding this request? Hearing none, commissioners, a call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, docket number 2024-34-Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved, and it's planning commission final action in 21 days unless a request is made to the legislative body to hear the item. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item tonight.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I, I'm told that the applicant in the next hearing that you're getting ready to call is on his way, but went to the wrong courthouse.
Okay.
Be, should be here shortly, so if it is okay, we might move along to the fourth item and then come back and get the third one.
That, that would be, there he is. All right, there, there, he's here. Okay.
Never mind.
Well, thank you, Ham. No. Uh, staff report on, uh, our next, our next item is number three, 2024-35-Z County, and 2024-V16 Southern Queen by Bellevue LLC, care of Desmond Bell, has filed an application to rezone, uh, five-tenths of an acre, approximately five-tenths of an acre, located at 136 and 140 State Street, from Light Industrial to General Business with a general development plan. The applicant has also filed concurrent variance application regarding the side yard setback adjacent to a single-family use. Rachel?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in July for the properties you just referenced, located on State Street. And the applicant is proposing to rezone the property in order to redevelop the historic Southern Queen property and develop a multi-use, multi-family residential use fronting East Second Avenue, which is this blue structure back here, shown on the site plan. There's also an existing, so the historic Southern Queen, uh, property is the building on the corner, and then there's an existing single-family home here that is proposed to remain. This is the current aerial view, and you'll see the current zoning is light industrial. And the current land use is single-family, and the future land use designation is mixed-use residential. And in reviewing the application, the staff found that the application did comply with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process, and found the proposal to be generally compatible with the surrounding area. We have a couple of points for your consideration on page two, uh, under the layout lot sizes and setbacks section about midway down. Um, you'll see on the site plan before you that parking is shown to the rear of the new structure along the alley. However, there is no requirement in the development plan conditions that the property be developed as such. Staff suggested that the parking lot be located behind the multifamily building along the alley as a character consideration, pulling the building up to the variable front yard setback along East Second Avenue, as shown on the site plan, is more in character with the residential properties you would historically find in the Shake Rag community. Um, and then touching on page three, under the building materials review, uh, building exteriors in the vicinity are a mix of vinyl, aluminum, metal, brick, stone, block, and other modern masonry materials. And the applicant addressed building materials and the development plan conditions for any future residential structures to be constructed on the property, but did not address building materials for any non-residential structure. And then last, I'm going to jump over, um, we did note a consideration relating to an additional setback that's required, um, when this new property line, if, if this were to move forward, this new property line, um, with this being a commercial use on the corner, it triggers an additional setback when you're adjacent to a single-family. Uh, this proposal would not meet that, and so the applicants have requested a variance. And that information is detailed on page number five. Uh, and you'll just see that section 468C1 of the zoning ordinance requires a 40-foot side yard setback when adjacent to a single-family use, and the applicants have requested a 28-foot variance from this side yard setback. And then on page six, they've supplied, uh, supporting statement, uh, to address that variance request. And then last, I'll just jump back to page one. Um, and again, the proposal does comply with the majority of the criteria that we reviewed, and we did find the application to be generally compatible with the surrounding area. And therefore, our staff recommendation is for approval pending public hearing, testimony, and discussion. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Rachel. Um, I think we might have a question or two, or, excuse me, first. Uh, commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurd?
May I ask a couple, just to kind of, uh, maybe push this process along as it pertains to the multifamily use on Lot One?
Sure.
Did I understand you to suggest that the applicant might consider limiting the use on Lot One to a multifamily use only?
No, our, uh, point for consideration there, um, was just the location of the parking, uh, relative to the alley. Right now, the site plan shows the building being pulled up to the front setback here that kind of lines up with the existing building, um, with the parking to the rear. Um, but there's nothing in the development plan conditions that would actually require that.
Would require what?
That the parking be located behind the structure and that the structure be pulled up to the road. And then our other point for consideration, uh, related to building materials, um, in that right now, the existing structures, well, there's two existing structures, so there's really no material requirements to review for those at this time because they're just going to remain. And so in development plan condition, I believe it's number four, um, it just says any new residence must be constructed of those materials. And so right now, the current plan is for this to be a residential structure. But in the future, if any three of the lots were redeveloped for commercial purposes, there's not a condition in this set of development plan conditions that would address building materials for a commercial building.
So if you look at, at the site plan, going back to what Mr. Moore said, that you have a, the one, if we're looking at it on the right, on the front, is the old hotel.
The old Southern Queen property, yes.
And the one on the left is a home that has been recently remodeled.
Single-family residence, yes.
Right. And so the parking would be behind that, but then the blue one, what Mr. Moore was asking, is going to be a residential?
Multifamily residential structure.
Okay. Okay.
So the blue, the blue structure is, looks like a triplex. It's a triplex, right?
That's what the applicant is currently proposing, yes. But under the zoning that's requested, there could be a commercial use on the property at some point in the future. And that's why we just noted that the development plan conditions, if someone built a commercial structure on the property, only address materials for residential structures.
So would it be a proper question to ask, ask the applicant or the representative if this is going to be a triplex or commercial?
I don't think that that's the concern of staff. I think.
Are you saying if something happened on lots two and three were torn down and something else was built back?
Right, or if the applicant decided not to build a three-plex apartment building, but instead wanted to build an office building in that same footprint?
Correct.
The materials would, would, there's nothing to address materials for commercial structures.
Would the staff be okay if it said any new resident or commercial?
Or just any new primary structure on the property will be these materials. That would be our suggestion.
Okay. What is, what kind of business, what is in the old hotel building area? Is that?
Right now, it's, it's, it's vacant. Um, the applicant may be able to speak more in detail about the future plans for the building.
And is that, that's on Lot Three of this?
Yes.
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 Yes, the corner lot.
Okay.
Oh, and I forgot. Thanks for reminding me, Matthew. We do have photos. So here's the existing, this is the, the corner, corner lot here, existing single-family home there. So this is looking at the properties from State Street. And then this is the view from East Second Avenue, and in this vacant area is where that new building would be constructed. And then that's the view of the property looking from the alley. And then that's looking at State Street from the property. Or is that?
Yes.
Yes.
State Street.
And then that's the view from the property across East Second Avenue. And then that's a view across the alley.
All right. Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hurd?
I don't have any questions, but I have a, uh, comment. Uh, I want to, uh, compliment Mr. Bell for taking on this project. I know it's a challenge. And this is something that has a lot of history to it from a, from a vulnerable standpoint. So I just want to compliment him on taking on the challenge of redeveloping this property because it's very important to our city.
Thank you, Mr. Starks. Commissioners, any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Rachel. Is the applicant or the representative here anything y'all would like to add? Maybe one of you come to the microphone. I think there was a question or two about the, uh, building materials on the, in the future. Yes, sir. If you'd state your name and address, please, sir.
Uh, Desmond Bell. My home address, 2860, uh, 65 Laurel Stone Lane.
All right. You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So commissioners, there was a, in the staff report, there was a question regarding the potential triplex in the building materials, and also if the other structure was torn down. Did, did you understand those questions?
Yes.
So, so would you be okay in, in your DPC four, if we struck the word residence and just put structures? Any new structures?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would mean any new structure?
Yeah, anything new built there would, would go with the brick, stone, the 80% of brick, stone?
You said brick, stone?
Well, what you've got listed here, we're just, we'd like to change the word residence, scratch residence, and put any new structures must be constructed of 80% brick, stone, aluminum, metal, vinyl, block, or any other modern masonry material.
And that would include hardy board?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Volker. Any other questions for Mr. Bell?
What, what's in, where the hotel was at? What, what, what kind of businesses in there now, or is, is there anything in there now?
We haven't started on it. Um, right now, we're finishing up, um, 533 Second Avenue, and then we're going to start on the Southern Queen. Um, the plan is to reopen it as a boutique hotel. And it has six suites, and, um, we're focusing on traveling nurses at Green, uh, Greenview Medical Center.
Nice. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Bell? Did, so Ham, when he, did he agree?
He has agreed as to the change in DPC number four for residence to structure. And, but I'm asking Rachel if she wants to suggest, uh, a limitation on where the parking on Lot Number One is going. Is that?
Well, I did want to just clarify one thing on, uh, development plan condition four. I think we, just for clarification purposes, we want to make sure that hardy board or fiber cement board siding is included in that list of things, just so that that's on the record.
Okay.
And then it's up to the commission, um, whether or not they want to ask about the, the parking relative to the alley, the building along East Second.
Mr. Bell, who all have, all the structures would have access to that parking or?
Um, well.
Was it, or is it just for the Southern?
No, it would be for the, um, the triplex also. Um, 130, 136 has its own driveway and parking.
Thank you.
Does that answer the question, Rachel? No? As far as the parking?
My understanding that, uh, Mr. Bell wants the flexibility to put the parking in either location. We had just noted a consideration that the location shown on the site plan is just more in keeping with the character of the historic Shake Rag community. So that's just a point for your consideration.
So, Mr. Bell, going back to what Ms. Hurd just said, the, the property in the blue, uh, the triplex potentially, and are you agreeable with leaving the parking as, as shown on the depicted plan?
No. Actually, I, it, it's supposed to be reversed. The blue building is supposed to be where the parking. the parking is, and the parking is supposed to be behind the Southern Queen.
So on it? So the blue building... Which would probably make more sense because will the Southern Bell... Will the hotel use that parking also?
Yes.
So it probably would make more sense to flip-flop it.
Yeah.
So staff, is there with potentially six rooms in the Southern Bell and then three rooms in the... Or three in the triplex? Is that correct, three potential units?
Yes, sir.
Is there enough parking?
Yeah, in this part of the city, there's no parking requirement.
Okay.
For non-residential uses, it's only a minimum requirement of one space per unit.
Don't we have in there on-street parking there also?
Yes, there is on-street parking on State Street.
All right. Okay. So potentially, you're going to flip these two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Ms. Hurt? Are we... I know it's up to us, but... No, no. Thank you for your input. I didn't mean that. Just so for clarification. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, and so I think as I hear it, then Mr. Bell says he wants to preserve his right to put the parking either adjacent to Second Avenue or back in the rear corner of Lot 1. And so that being the case, then there shouldn't be any restriction in the DPC that pertains to where the parking is going. He has the right to put it where he wants to, subject to setback and access. That's all. So that's a long answer, too. I don't see the need for further change, other than the ones we've already done, and that is to change residence to structure and add hardy board to the list of permissible materials.
Okay. Commissioners?
Chair Warren, for the record, should we... The architect that did this, should this be modified to show that?
No, I think... No, I think what Hamp's saying is just he has the flexibility to do it the way you asked.
To do it any way, yeah.
I think you probably leave it that way.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Mr. Bell, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Jase, anything you want to add?
That was my fault. I forgot to send the updated one with the building in back.
I'm sorry, what?
I meant to put building in back. I just never sent the new concept.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Can I have a question?
Yes, sir. If you would come to the microphone, please. Yes, sir. If you would state your name and address, please, sir?
Graham Townsend, 613 Kelly Harris Road, Bowling Green.
All right. Mr. Townsend, you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Yes, sir. Your question?
Well, my purpose for being here has nothing to do with this, but I can't... From where I'm sitting, I can't read those. So I just want a clarification. The blue... The gray building is the old hotel. Is that correct?
The gray is a parking lot. The gray is parking lot.
What's the blue building?
That's the new building.
That's the new building?
Yes, sir.
Where's the old hotel?
The...
The front, the front corner.
The blue building.
The lower right quadrant?
Yes, sir.
I still can't read it. I'm sorry. This is the hotel? Okay. Oh, and so the swap would be swapping the blue with the gray?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It'd make more sense.
Okay. And what's in the lower-left quadrant?
It says single residence.
Single-family residence.
Yeah, single-family house.
House.
It's a house. Yes, sir.
So if you remove the word residence and replace it with structure, doesn't that kind of leave it open for whatever the lease... Whoever buys the property or leases the property after Mr. Bell is finished, doesn't it kind of leave it open?
Well, we're saying...
And so might impact the...
Well, we're saying any new structures that might go onto the property would have to adhere to the building materials.
Right. But there's no restriction on occupancy?
Well, that's a whole different situation. That... All we're talking about is the building materials. If something is to be built, those are the building materials that would have to be used on a new building.
Okay.
Now, if somebody wants to come back and do something different, they might have to come back here or another body to talk about it. We're only talking about building materials.
The permitting thing.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, just for building materials.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Appreciate the clarification.
Thank you for your questions. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has a question regarding this request? Okay. So commissioners, we have... The applicant has agreed to the condition... Development plan conditions, and we have a zone change, and then we also have the variance. So I would call for a motion for both of those, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan, docket number 2024-35ZDG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, we now call for a motion, please, on the variance. I make the motion to approve the request of the variance presented at the staff report for the property at 140 State Street, docket number 2024-V16. The testimony presented at this public hearing has shown that granting this variance will adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow any unreasonable circumcise of the requirements of the zoning regulation.
Second.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The zoning approval is complete, and it's final action in 21 days unless a request is made for the legislative body and our final action on the variance. Thank you all. Our next item tonight is 2024-36Z County. Luke Townsend has filed an application to rezone 1.5 acres located on a portion of the property at 697 Kelly Harris Road from Ag to RE Residential Estate with a general development plan. Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting back in May for the property on Kelly Harris Road. There's their site plan, the aerial view of the property. The current zoning of the property is Ag, current land use is agriculture as well, and then the future land use designation is also agriculture. And then again, there is their site plan. They are proposing to rezone roughly 1.5 acres from Ag to RE Residential Estate in order to create an additional building lot. Looking down to the bottom of page one, there are a couple of considerations. One on page two is noting road width. The property has frontage on Kelly Harris Road, which has around 50 feet of right-of-way and 12 feet of pavement width. This is less than the typical 18-foot minimum standard. Also on page two is looking down to the loss of prime farmland. The property is classified as prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. And then our final point of consideration is regarding the building orientation, which is over on page three. Existing residential structures along this portion of Kelly Harris Road are oriented to face the roadway. Staff suggested that the applicant consider including a development plan condition to address building orientation for the proposed home. The applicant communicated to staff that they did not wish to address this, as the proposed home is planned to be located down the hill in the woods and may not be directly oriented to face the road, but that it would not be visible from the road due to the hillside. And with those three points, looking back to page one, the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is still generally compatible with the surrounding area. And with that, staff's recommendation is for approval pending public hearing, testimony, and discussion. And that's all that I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Jenny?
So did they tell you how far off the road the house would be going?
I don't believe that they committed to a minimum setback in their development plan conditions. We do have some images that might help with orienting yourself from the road, but they did not commit to a specific setback.
Okay. But it wouldn't be visible from the road?
Yeah. So, okay. So I wonder... Okay.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions for Jenny? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here or anything they would like to add? Okay. Is there commissioners' questions?
No, I don't think so. No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience who has opposition to this request? Okay. Hearing now, I'm going to call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan, docket number 2024-36ZCO. Based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion to include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Jase?
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved, and planning commission final action in 21 days unless a request is made for the legislative body to hear the item. No other items. One discussion item, Matthew will be sending out a email regarding our September 19th and October 4th meeting to make sure that we have a quorum for those meetings, and then to the others that are not here because our September 19th is a full board meeting. We have five items, I believe, on that item on that day, and then October 3rd, preliminary three items. So if we could all respond so that... Because we want to be fair to our applicants and make sure that everybody's here. Okay? All right. Thank you all, and we will adjourn and see you all September 19th. Thank you.